Good morning. Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 Board Meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. Would we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is our agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second. I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. And we will jump right into County Ditch Number One. Good morning and welcome everyone to the public hearing for the proposed repairs for County Ditch Number One. At this time, I'll ask Ryan Hinnaker to read the judicial documents for this hearing.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I've got a quick memo before the hearing notices.
Blue Earth County Ditch One watershed is approximately 2,572 acres. It is predominantly located in McPherson Township. Drainage staff were performing scheduled inspections of the open ditch when many repairs were identified. Blue Earth County Drainage Staff consulted with engineer Mr. Chuck Brandl to develop a repair report. The repair report was developed using drainage staff input as well as landowner and engineering survey recommendations. Following an informational landowner meeting held on April 23rd, drainage and engineering staff were asked to move forward with the repair report. Said report also included water quality features which will be installed as grant funding for these become available. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting approval for the provided drafted findings in order approving the engineer's report and ordering repairs for County Ditch One. Hearing notices were mailed to landowners on June 27th, also posted in Manquino Freepress and also outside of the corridors. That is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Can I get a motion in a second to accept the F Davids into legal record?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. All right. While the motion carries, we will now have Mark Orger review his prepared repair report for this hearing. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Mark Orger. I have Jacob Mueller along with me. He did the majority of the work on this project, so he'll present quite a bit of it today here. We are filling in for Chuck today. He is on the road. And kind of like Ryan had just mentioned here, we are following the repair statute for this project a little bit, not a standard where you have a petition for repair, look at the results, see what you have for survey, and then go the report. This was really kind of driven by county staff and then a lot of input from the landowners in getting this one ready. And so after today, we're presenting this repair reports. And then kind of the action would be approving the repair report, moving forward with plans, or maybe looking at a different alternative of that modified report. But with that, I'll let Jacob go through a lot of the projects, and then I'll wrap it up with some of the costs.
Sounds good. Just looking at the system a bit in general here, it's predominantly within McPherson and Mado Townships. Drains a little bit over 2,600 acres, relatively flat system, only about 65 feet of fall throughout the entire system. CD soils, there's a lot of clay, and again, it's predominantly farm. A little bit of history into the system. It was established in 1897. Originally, it was not the full extent of the open ditch system we see today. It was only a little over 12,000 feet. Following that, over the years, there's been several culverts replaced. There's been routine cleanings. As far as improvements goes, improvement, improvements go. In 1945, the system began to look a lot more like it does today. The mainline open ditch was extended up to Highway 83, as well as Branch One being established going east to Highway 83. The mainline tile was also established and goes underneath Highway 83 at that time as well. Later in '65, multiple crossings were upsized. Here we've just got a bit of a view of the existing watershed. You can see most of the infrastructure resides on the west side of Highway 83. A good portion of the watershed is on the east side. A little bit about capacities of the system, a quick bounce back to this slide. You can see where the ditch runs from the Little Cobb River all the way up to 83, and all the crossings are numbered there. Those crossings, from a capacity standpoint, are generally pretty good. We look to see about 1 inch per day for adequate in an open ditch condition. Here, we see a couple that are just shy of that. Crossing number two is at a .96, but it's at a very large negative grade, so that's kind of an issue with drainage. And then crossing number nine also has a reduced capacity, and it's also significantly above grade, which is also seen as an issue. A couple other culverts were slightly above grade or in a state of disrepair, which we'll get into here. To kind of get an insight into the system on a ground view, as well as get took graphic information, a survey was completed. At this time, we got a few pictures. Just upstream of Highway 14, around Station 40 on the system, there's a lot of excess tree growth in there, a lot of stuff coming into the ditch that needs to get repaired. Similarly, further upstream, crossing number seven, under 618th Ave., which would be crossing number seven, there's some disjointed culvert sections. You can kind of see in the pictures on the top right and the bottom right that there's actually a void in the culvert which is sucking in the road. The picture in the bottom right is a picture of that void that's getting sucked down into the culvert. Similarly, we did a drone survey. This was done to kind of get a good overview of the whole system, point out areas where the side slopes are failing, et cetera. From what we saw, most of the culverts don't have a lot of armoring. Downstream, there's a lot of sloughing in and around the culverts due to excess velocities, failure. So yeah, we saw a lot of those issues. Similarly, downstream, in the areas, mostly downstream of Highway 14, there's a lot of large-scale sloughing, you know, 300, 400 feet long. We believe this is the result of an overexcavation during a routine cleaning in the past. Got overdug, the side slopes didn't have any base to hold them, they fall in. And we see a lot of that in the downstream end where the grade is very, very steep. So high velocities, overexcavated, side slopes fall in. And that's about the first mile of the system we see a lot of that. Further upstream, the issues are a lot more localized, you know, smaller issues, side slope repair. As far as cleaning goes, in the upstream areas, there's a decent amount of sediment accumulation further upstream, upstream of crossing number nine, as well as in Branch One, where the bed of the channel is very, very flat, not a lot of grade, not much velocity to carry that sediment out. In the downstream areas, there's some meandering developing as a result of these side slope failures, and that's producing a little bit of sediment in the channel. Looking at a repair design for this, we focus on a few things. So as far as culverts go, we want to look at material. So underneath the township roads, we propose reinforced concrete culverts for longevity at this point. We want to maintain as constructed capacity for those culverts. We want to look at adequate protection, so armoring, repair, where we see issues to reduce erosion, prevent loss of ag land. And then finally, a large portion of this project is looking at alternative BMPs or best management practices. Those will include alternative side intakes or ASIs, and rock ripple structures, which are going to seek to restabilize the bed and prevent future erosion. Here's kind of a large overview of the map. You can see here that all of our repairs are localized to the ditch. Upstream, there's a lot of cleaning, and downstream, there's a lot of repairs as well as those rock ripple structures. A little bit closer of a view, this is the southern portion. If we go back here, you can see that, what is that? Highway 10 kind of segments where this picture is taken. In the downstream, it's mostly large-scale side slope repairs, what we discussed earlier. Just upstream of Crossing Three is that wooded area I was discussing. That'll need to get cleaned out, re-sloped, tree removal, as well as downstream of Crossing Three would be the rock ripple structures that I had mentioned that Mark will discuss a little bit more in a minute here. Further upstream, the repairs get a bit more standard. We're still seeing some ASIs. There's some large depressional areas that are washing over the banks, that store a lot of water during rainfall events and eventually pour over the banks, causing erosion. These alternative side intakes would seek to kind of alleviate that, kind of take some of that water before it pours over the banks, as well as, go back here, as well as kind of handle that flow. Going back up, we can see a couple, we'll talk about the culverts now. Crossing number two, after discussion with the landowner, we determined that they have land on both sides of that crossing, both north and south, and they did not see the need to have it anymore. This was one of the crossings that was having issues. So we're proposing to remove that crossing and just repair the ditch in that portion. Looking up to crossing number six, this is an existing plastic pipe. It's about a foot above grade, which is restricting flow for everything upstream. This would get lowered to grade, back to the as constructed condition and then legal grade. And then finally, crossing seven and nine. Seven is in a state of disrepair, needs to be replaced. And then crossing number nine is also above grade, limiting drainage for a significant portion of the watershed as that mainline tile drains most of the eastern portion of the system on the other side of Highway 83. You can see the areas where we're proposing cleaning in that kind of magenta or pink color. The majority of Branch One, the very furthest upstream extents of Branch Nine. Sediment accumulation isn't the largest problem on the system. It's mostly the erosion issues in the culverts. So again, I've discussed this a little bit, but we've repaired these culverts that I just discussed, crossings two, six, seven, and nine. Sorry, two would get replaced, the rest would get either lowered or repaired at the same capacity. So with that, I'll let Mark talk a little bit about the ripples.
Thank you. So Jacob talked a lot about kind of that bank erosion and the bank sliding down and the sloughing, and a little bit of the channel meandering. A couple reasons that we kind of identified these rock ripple structures, and I'll kind of jump ahead and explain what we found. So when we did the survey of the open channel and looked at the sloughing areas and then plotted that legal grade onto a profile, what we saw was we saw this existing channel, which is identified with this dash line. That's actually below where the legal grade is, and another kind of telltale is looking at these culvert crossings. Legal grade lines up pretty well at those culverts, and we still see the bottom of the channel going down. And so one indication could have been an overexcavation, but also with the channel grade as steep as this ditch has, it could just be downcutting over time. And what that kind of is described as a channel incision. And what happened is this channel bank eventually, well, the channel bottom goes down and down and down, and the banks don't have anything at the bottom to support it. This naturally will occur in a river, so you kind of see these floodplains and the benches occur after that. But in a ditch system, what we really want to do is kind of try to actually build that bottom back up. Because if you don't have a stable bottom holding that in, eventually over time, the banks are going to start coming in. And like Jacob had mentioned, there was a really long stretch, a couple long stretches of bank sloughing that had just totally caved in because of that. So it might seem a little bit counterintuitive what we're proposing here, but really what we're looking at is several of these rock ripple structures, and I'll kind of put them out here on the profile. And really what you do is you design these to kind of have a big head wall at the front end of it to hold that channel bottom in place, and then you transition it back down into the existing channel grade. And if you've ever kind of heard the terms with, you know, like rivers and streams, a ripple pool situation, that's what we're trying to design here. So you kind of hold the banks and hold the channel sides up. You transition the water through that steeper grade and then let it hit kind of the downstream pool area. I'll show a couple examples of that in a little bit here that we've installed in the past. But that's kind of what we're looking at for those water quality features. Again, looking at the rock ripples, just to protect the banks from, you know, more of the side slope failures. And so looking at that, and again, we've got a handout that shows a lot of this as well, but a couple different cost options. This was driven a lot by county staff and landowners' input too. But looking at the typical repair items that Jacob had mentioned, the open ditch cleaning, putting in some of the side slope repairs, seeding those side slope repairs, maybe arboring some of those tile outlets. We do have kind of more of a standard cost with the mainline and Branch One, and those are estimated at $239,000 for the mainline and then $31,000 for the Branch One. That crossing two that we identified to pull out, that's about $4,000. And then crossing number six to lower that is about $19,000 as well. The two main items that we do recommend, but I'll talk a little about maybe some potential grant funding on that, are those constructed ripples. Those are estimated about $92,000. And then those alternative side intakes, again, taking those surface water pools and taking them through a pipe structure versus let them just kind of erode their way through the open channel. So for the option one, total cost is estimated at $435,000. We do have two of those crossings that would be maintained and paid for by the road authority. Those are estimated at $83,000. So the entire project for the system would be $518,000, but for the direct benefit of landowners, we're looking at that $435,000. The next option is option two, just kind of showing the comparison of costs without those two water quality features, again, without the rock ripples and the alternative side intakes. Same items listed, only the subtotal goes to just under $300,000. So that'd be an option to consider. Again, we'd recommend putting those structures in just to maintain the long-term integrity of the ditch bank. If you don't have those in, you're probably going to see routine maintenance as more and more side slope failures on the open ditch banks. And just kind of pointing out the road authority cost for the townships here, looking at replacing the culverts. Again, they have CMP culverts. One of them's above grade, one of them is really deteriorating. Recommending putting those back in as concrete just to have more longevity on it, and obviously putting them in at the correct grade. So just a couple examples. This project is fairly small when you look at some of our bigger drainage projects that we've worked on, but it is large enough that we'd have to do a public bid on this just because you've got over $175,000 of work to be done. And so with that, we've got some stringent bidding requirements, just to make sure we have a qualified contractor out there, putting in their list of contractors. There's a responsible contractor form that has to be submitted before you bid, providing a list of equipments, and then pass project references. And then another thing too is the bid bond, just a few extra things that we put in there just to make sure we get qualified contractors for a project of this size. Couple example photos of what the project will look like when constructed. This is kind of similar to that case of the tree removes that we need in that one stretch just off of Highway 14. Again, just trying to get enough of path through there so we can access through it. We're not talking about taking the entire grove down, but getting that 6.5-foot buffer through so that we can get grass growing and then have that room to access it in the future. Open ditch cleaning, again, not a lot of areas on this channel that need to be cleaned out, but again, just trying to get that bottom dipped out, try not to touch the banks in the stable areas and then side casting spoils. Some of the areas, again, we do have a lot of sloughs. We might have to pull those banks back, reseed them, reshape the buffers, and it'll look kind of like this shown on the right-hand side. A couple spots aren't as terrible for the bank failures, and so we kind of can pull the sloughed material out and then maybe put some of the riprap on that toe to kind of hold the basin. There's a couple spots we identified for that. But most of them will look more like this, where we actually do have to lay the buffer down, or excuse me, lay the bake down, and then expand the buffer slightly by a few Some of the tile outlets are in pretty poor condition, and what we look at here is when we repair these tiles, we just pull back about 20 feet or so through the ditch bank, put either a plastic pipe or dual-wall pipe on there, and then outlet on top of riprap. A lot of them are kind of some metal pipes that are bent and busted and need to be replaced, and they're kind of causing some scour in the ditch bank. So that's what that would look like. Road crossings, this might be a little bit of an extreme case, but for the township roads, kind of looking more like the top-left picture, we'd open up the road, put in the concrete pipe, and then rebuild that base back up. Couple crossings that don't need to have the full replacement, we would add a bunch of riprap kind of on the sides here and around the top, just sometimes you get a little bit of that eddy current on the sides there that can erode some of the banks right along the culvert. And so that was, this is an example of what that would look like there. Good example showing the alternative side inlets here. So kind of on the right, again, what we would do instead of letting the water just pour over the side of the ditch bank, we'd put in a pipe structure, have an intake riser on it, and then kind of allow a little bit more slower flow to go through those risers and then into the open channel. Blue Earth County's been doing this a lot, so I think you've seen several examples like this. Okay, so the rock ripples, and I'll explain kind of going back and forth here, but I had mentioned kind of building that foundation, kind of that head wall at the leading end of the structure. I'll kind of show you on this right figure here first. So again, we're trying to actually build the bottom up of the channel a little bit just to hold that basin place. So we have like really big boulders put in on that head wall here. We kind of add some smaller rock and really kind of pound it in to get a really good footing there. And then we add in smaller rock that kind of transitions down that slope into the next pool structure where you're going to have standing water. So you've probably seen a lot of it. I'll just jump ahead and show you an example. Again, you've kind of got a top end here, you've got that heavier head wall, and then you transition some of that grade through the rocks that we have underneath it so that we don't have a lot more downcutting. And then once you get past this ripple, again, because the channel has been enlarged so much, you'll have kind of some standing water behind it so that that velocity hits the pool water and then dissipates that way. On the right's another good example showing kind of that head wall, and then again, trying to formulate and show where that, the flow is going to go right down the middle of the ditch, that we try to prevent it from meandering back and forth. And so again, this is just our detail. Like I said, the biggest things here is getting a really solid head wall and then tapering that all the way through between a half a foot and a foot of elevation change so that we can really capture all of that velocity and that force over that riprap. The multi-purpose range management, again, we do have a plan put together that's in the handout as well, but looking at several different water quality features that could be added throughout the watershed. We'll show that map that shows some of the watershed practices, like preventative measures, looking at upland practices with cover crops, maybe different crop rotations. No really specific area on the watershed that we identified there, but one of the other ones that we did is the controlled subsurface drainage. Again, this is maybe looking at some baffle structures on private tiles that are on flat areas that we can kind of manipulate the water table. Those are a lot of areas that we had shown on the map. And then the treatment measures, maybe potentially looking at like a WASCA, beside inlets, or some sort of wetland restoration. And I'll jump to the map again. Again, we've got a lot of areas shown here in the yellow. That's kind of some of the areas to maybe consider looking at controlled drainage. But for this system, the biggest ones that we're going to recommend is going to be the alternative side intakes. Those are shown with these yellow and orange jots, and then the purple triangle, and then the rock ripple structure is shown with these orange diamonds at the bottom end. So water quality implementation, really looking at the on-ditch practices for this watershed. And so with that, again, kind of a joint effort between the county staff and then with the landowners, looking at what's wrong with the ditch, how can we solve some of the issues, and really looking at fixing just the deterioration. So it's not like it's a major cleanout, but trying to prevent some of the future erosion, fix the erosion that's happened now. And after looking at it, the project is effective for what we have for the watershed drain into it, and we do recommend looking at a approval for this repair report as presented. So I know we kind of went through it pretty quickly here, but with that, I can, myself or Jacob, can take any questions from the board.
Before your report, this time, we'll be open. First of all, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
No questions. Thank you very much. We'll be open to a public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit, and the county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used up the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive and are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment? Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Number One?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I may have forgotten a kind of important detail here. I'm going to go back to the cost real quick, just to explain why the landowners have two different options and two different costs. With these constructed ripples and ASIs, we have been working with the SWCD on some potential grant funding for those, and there will be some funds coming available through that one watershed on plan that comes out in the next several months. So one way to maybe look at the cost too is, you know, we are recommending that option one with that $435,000. If you take the ripples out, and there will be some match requirements, but we are looking at trying to get the extra funding and have a repair looking more towards that 300, maybe 315,000, depending on what kind of match is needed. So kind of a big thing since we are talking potentially over $100,000 of grant funding, just thought I should add that for the landowners in the room.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So what would happen this year, sorry also for further clarification, would look more like option two, approving option one with the stipulation only when funds are available.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Then we will go back to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comments on the County Ditch Number One repairs? I will go back. Anyone wishing to make comments on the County Ditch Number One repairs? And the last time, anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Number One repairs? Having hearing, no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any further questions or comments from the board?
I don't have a question. The only comment I have is, you know, thank you for that clarification, Mark, and it sure is nice, the way you guys work with the SWCD, to be able to implement some of these into these projects. And then with the caveat that, you know, if the funding doesn't come, we can still move forward with the project. So, because we need to get the projects done, but I appreciate all the extra work to try to work with the SWCDs and cleaner water. That's the only comment I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to accept the findings in order approving the provided engineering repair report and ordering the engineer to prepare the necessary detailed plans and documents for the public bidding for this repair?
I will approve, move option one.
Second. Got a motion in a second to approve option number one. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. The passes.
Thank you, Jacob, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Thank you, landowners. Appreciate the input.
All right. Okay. I've got to get back to my agenda here. Okay. County Ditch 52.
We've got two items, starting with County Ditch 52. Blue Earth County, Ditch 52 is in Sterling Township in Blue Earth County. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established the improvement for this on November 23rd, 2021. The project was awarded to Groundworks Baccal Service LLC. Purpose is the property and environmental resources department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractor. Today, we request the Drainage Authority to set a public hearing date of August 8th, 2023, for the acceptance hearing for the petition improvement work proportions of County Ditch 52.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Go ahead.
The second one, this item here is on petition for the improvement of County Ditch 78. The Blue Earth County Ditch 78 watershed is approximately 9,200 acres in size and located in Vernon Center Township. A petition for improvement was received on May 30th, 2023. Drainage Authority Attorney Kale Van Burgen of Rinkin-Newtonan reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate. Minnesota Statute 103 E.241 subdivision one requires the engineer be appointed by order of the Drainage Authority. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint Charles J. Brandl of ISG to prepare the preliminary survey report in accordance with Minnesota Statute 103 E.241. So moved.
Second. I got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Not discussion, but I got a question.
Go for it.
So I graduated in '78. That was the only reason I can remember my ditch number before I got involved in ditches. As I'm a resident on this, remind me now, do I, can I take action on that as it is being affected by ditch 78 or do I abstain?
I would say at this point, you probably could take action. Maybe when we get to the point where there's money involved, that might be something where you'd want to recuse yourself.
Thank you. Does our county attorney agree with that?
Does our county attorney agree with that? Then we'll go with Bob.
You know, it boils down to when do you have a conflict.
Well, it's easier to ask before you do it than what you're saying.
You said there's no money exchanging at this time, so. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Jump into public works, Ryan.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
A handful of action items today and a few reports that will hopefully get approved and we'll try to keep it moving. The first action item is consideration of a resolution for right-of-way acquisition on County-Stated Highway 29. For replacement of the existing bridge, number 7190, we are going to get federal funds for that bridge replacement project. Federal formula funds through the Area Transportation Partnership as a result of the IIJA Federal Infrastructure Bill. So, with that, the resolution was included in the board's packet. I would recommend approval of said resolution.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. The passes.
The second action item is consideration of bids for the installation of a box culvert on County-Stated Highway 15. This is one of those steel arch plate culverts that we had previously discussed that are failing and are severely, were severely low-rated. We did purchase the box culvert already from the supplier in order to overcome the significant delays that are associated with those materials right now. We're anticipating seeing that in the month of August. So we purchased the 10-foot by 7-foot box culvert for $151,704. And this is for placement of the box culvert and repair of the road. The low bidder, actually the engineer's estimate was $156,514.50 with the low bidder of the five bids received being R&amp;E Enterprises of Mankato at $134,043.72, which is 14.36% under the engineer's estimate. So we were able to mitigate some of that risk of the box culvert by again purchasing that in advance. I have provided you with a copy of the project bid abstract and the bid summary was obviously included in the board packet. We've had R&amp;E, last year they reconstructed Cassau 11. They've also done several of our gravel hauling projects. So, I would recommend award to R&amp;E Enterprises of Mankato.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? It's interesting how long it takes for those culverts to arrive though.
Yeah.
How long a year? We're not expecting it to arrive until when?
August.
August. When did we order that?
I believe in February.
Isn't that amazing?
It's an industry issue right now and in fact, one of the, I sit on the Research Implementation Committee, which is an offshoot of the Local Road Research Board. And one of the, one of the projects we had discussed was doing a research project center around developing standard plates for cast-in-place box culverts. The state doesn't, hasn't used those for decades because precast has just been the go-to. However, with the industry shortcomings, we're looking at designing them so that they could be constructed in place and having kind of a standard plate that you could pull off of the shelf and drop into a plan set and utilize without having to pay an engineer to do a standard plan every year.
It'd be interesting to see what the cost will be on that because labor costs have gone up to do that also, so.
There are some counties right now that are actually doing bidding both, but there's, again, engineering inputs into designing the cast-in-place culvert. And then again, yes, you're right, the labor conditions and the time, you know, usually precast is so much faster.
Right.
But because of the delay of getting the pipe.
Less road closures.
We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes.
All right. Thank you for that. The next action item is consideration and review and approval of the Public Works Department Annual Report. And I know we've, format has not changed from previous year, so I will kind of attempt to go through this relatively quickly, just hitting on a few highlights that the board may find of interest. On labeled page one, which is probably four or five pages into the document, is a summary of the Blue Earth County Highway Department mileage. So it's a breakout of our County-Stated Highway regular mileage, which is 420, our municipal mileage, which is 20.64, our county road mileage, 302.36, and then the subset of the construction and maintenance costs on each of those roadway systems. So that's in there for the board's information. On the subsequent page, there's a brief of activities, comments and recommendations. It's a summary of accomplishments that's resulted from the authorized expenditures and operations on the County-Stated Highways and County Roads in Blue Earth County. So if you want to know how much we spent on each individual road construction project in the course of 2022, that's broken out in there. On page 2B, which is a couple pages later, there's a written summary of major road and bridge work items that just summarizes each of the projects that were completed or had a significant amount of work done on them, including reconstruction on Cassau 1, Cassau 7, Cassau 11, Cassau 12, Cassau 27, bridges on Cassau 40, and county roads 151 and 169, as well as bituminous overlays on Cassau 5, 14, 27, 34, 41, 47, and 48, in addition to planning level projects. Couple pages later, there is a cost summary that summarizes all the different work. There's a map that follows those, that summary that shows a breakdown of where the graded overlay bridge and other projects were located within the county, for your reference. And then the subsequent page is a financial statement, summarizing the county, the Public Works Department's overall finances for 2022. We'll go to labeled page five, which is a few pages later. This is a breakdown, I thought the board might find interesting, of the town road allotment. This is a straight pass-through, but this is the dollars that the county receives for the townships and then we pass it directly to the township based on their mileage. So totaling $585,514 in 2022. I'm going to skip quite a few pages now and go to, I'm happy to answer questions along the way, go to page, it's labeled as page 11, but there's just a summary of the expenditures for snow and ice control, construction, engineering, right-of-way, and then as well as our building and capital outlay. There it is. And then there's a bunch of pages that are summary of road and bridge maintenance costs. Those are really just detailed accounting costs on this gloss over those pretty quickly. I'm going to jump to labeled page 17, which is our total cassau mileage. If you ever are curious as far as how many miles of pavement or gravel we have on each roadway, it's a detailed breakdown for each of those different systems of our cassau, regular cassau municipal and county roads. Then we're going to go nearly to the back of the document to labeled page 24. And that's the 2022 breakdown source of funding that we received. You'll see the breakdown of our created maintenance and construction dollars as well as our local and other federal and other dollars that we received into our funding cocktail, which is broken down on the table below. The subsequent page shows a expense breakdown. As you're aware, our department is not heavy with employee, in our total budget, the employee salaries and such are pretty minimal in that 1% administration. 78% goes back into construction and 23% goes into maintenance and equipment. And then beyond that, we've got, the next page has construction breakdown of, and maintenance breakdowns of those costs going out there. Again, the super majority of it going directly into the road and bridge infrastructure. The subsequent page is a graph showing our 2008 to 2022 expenditures. Obviously, the last few years have been spiked with that very significant turnback project of '21 and '22, $15 million turnback project will bend that line considerably. And then the charts on the page 28 show funding trends and the board will notice how dramatically the local amount increased after 2015. That's reflective of the local option sales tax and how much that's really helped our funding trends. And it's also helped us dramatically when you look at the chart below that of the constant 1970s dollars funding. So we look back to the construction cost index and correlate how much money we get back to $1970 to really see what our true buying power is. And you can again see that dramatic increase that the local option sales tax has had on our program following 2015, so 2020 through 2022. And with that, I would answer any questions that are in the report, but that was a brief With no questions, I would ask for approval of the 2022 annual report, the Public Works Department.
For motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Good report.
Yeah, very thorough. Well, it's a good report and it really shows what it takes to keep our roads drivable and do our farm to, you know.
Most importantly, keep the state aid money rolling in.
Well, yeah, the state and the, you know, get, make sure we keep the federal money and the state money keep on coming in, but that's huge. But thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes.
Okay. The next report we have included is the 2022 Parks Department Annual Report. I'll go through that very quickly. On about the third page, there's a summary. There were a total of 8,092 mobile and tent camping nights during the 2022 camping season. Revenue collected at Bray Park, Daly, Duck, Rapidan, and Williams Nature Center totaled $258,155.32, which is an increase of $37,882.96 from the previous year. As you're aware, we did increase the price of camping to $20, electricity to $10, and water to $5 per day instead of per week, the camping season, for the camping season of 2022. Shelter reservations at the parks, we generated 148 total shelter reservations and the caretakers sold 1,145 bundles of wood in 2022. Some major projects were the Bray Beach Area Bath House beginning, and that's nearing completion now. And the park staff also completed their routine grounds and maintenance operations. We could just jump a few pages to labeled page one, shows some 2022 park statistics. I've really already hit on the majority of those, but it does show contrast and comparison to 2021 and 2022 data and how it's differed. As we know, with 2021, we were coming out of COVID and our parks saw excessively high use, especially in the camping. However, we did have limitations on the number of sites, et cetera. Jump a few pages to labeled page eight, and this is another breakdown of our cash revenues. 34% of operations is really coming from revenue that we're receiving from sales within parks, camping fees, et cetera. And then local revenues is really the local levy that's helping fund the park system. And then our breakdown of expenditures, 48% going into operations, maintenance of the park, another, maintenance is another $307,000, and then really the $144,000 towards the bath house work and other projects, and 4% going into equipment. All in all, we've got some camping data available on page 10 that shows comparison of year-by-year boat rental camping and wood sales. I would note that boat rental is something that we did stop doing during COVID. We've decreased the purchase of how many canoes, kayaks, paddle boats, stuff like that that we've been buying because they're challenging for the caretakers to keep up with, especially when they're trying to man shops or renting them and people are pretty disrespectful of those pieces of equipment and they let them float off into the oblivion. So, we've had less of an emphasis on renting those out to the public. There's a comparison of caretakers' income on page 12, showing what each part caretaker made. So as you know, they receive a third of the camping fees, half of the reservation fees, one-third of the shelter reservation fees, one-quarter of the wood sale fees, and one-half of the boat rental fees. The subsequent page has a camping participation by week breakdown. And then as we go to the second to last page of that report, is the 2022 capital outlay construction projects completed and equipment purchased, which included a Polaris Ranger 570, a John Deere zero-turn mower, the bath house remodel, and a septic system at Bray Park. That concludes that report. I would also request approval of the 2022 Parks Department Annual Report.
Got a question?
Yes.
On the camping by weeks page, am I reading this right as we look at camping? We had three months when nobody camped at Rapidan and then only three weeks out of the six months that there was somebody there. They report differently.
I think that's reported differently. I apologize for that not being as detailed. As you know, at Rapidan Park, it's a different system that we have. So Rapidan is a paper ticket where the campers pull in and they leave their payment in an envelope in a lockbox with a paper slip, whereas Bray and Daly go through the ResNexus online reservation system, so we have much more detailed data on those. And Rapidan is dramatically less, both in number of campsites and in use compared to those two parks.
So looking at these numbers.
Those are a monthly number.
Yeah, but even looking at totals, I'm looking at yearly totals. So Rapidan Park or Rapidan Camping is about 6% of our reservations for the year. You said 80, 92?
Of night stayed, yes.
Of night stayed.
They don't, it's a first-come, serve-first service system. Yep, it's, you know, much smaller, much more rustic, obviously, and is only offered to tent campers and pop-ups. You can't bring an RV into Rapidan.
And the pop-ups only a couple spots for them, right?
Correct.
You can put that on.
They're accessible. A lot of those you have to walk into the sites.
But either or, not being used very much.
Not at all in comparison to Daly and Bray. Those are much more popular and, again, much larger.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move the report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. The passes.
Okay, thank you. Just some project updates. County-Stated Highway 16 from the La Sura River to Cassau 90. Most of the pipe work on the regrading segment is complete except for the storm sewer at the south end, which will be beginning soon. Contractor continues to bring the roadway to grade toward the south and the project is looking to be on schedule for late August or September, obviously being weather-dependent. Cassau 26 from 57 to Minnesota Highway 22. Storm sewer started on the very west end of the project and it's currently up to the road, so the, the outfall has been put in down to the lower area where the creek runs through the project, adjacent to the project. And now they're beginning to put it in within the road. But as you know, as we discussed previously, they've got to pull it all the way up the hill and all the way up the road for the entire length of the project, which was a big cost factor for the entire project. They're planning to follow behind the storm sewer with kind of building a road behind the storm sewer, so that'll be the limiting operation, I think, is they put those relatively large pipes in at a moderate depth on the overall project schedule. Cassau 13 from 169 to Cassau 1. Right-of-way acquisition is wrapping up. We are looking at opening bids in late August or early September. So we're getting close to, then we just need one more signature out there yet. On Cassau 11 from the west county line of Cassau 6, we're just still designing that project. 90% plans are completed. The right-of-way acquisition is begun and then the environmental permits will need to be submitted, but that's a fairly straightforward project. It's nice to get a job that's straight and relatively flat. So, biggest problem you have on those is usually going to be where can you get drainage And then we're working on the design still of Victory Drive, Cassau 82, from south of Hoffman Road to Fair Street. The layup concept has been completed, so we've approved it in concept. Now they're working toward detailed designs and actually developing plan sheets for our review. The utility relocation meeting is today, actually, I think here in an hour or two for the design level of where will the utilities, who will have to relocate and where will they relocate to? So that's kind of the first step of that process of coordinating with them after we get their information.
What's the timeframe on that?
So, right now, what we have, we had originally planned to reconstruct it next year entirely. However, based on the city's funding availability to pay for their share, we had broken that contract into two separate plan sets. So, we anticipate that it'd be most likely to reconstruct the segment from Hoffman to just south of Main Street next year, and then the segment from just south of Main Street to Fair Street in a subsequent year, likely 2025.
Who maintains the pathway on the?
The trail?
The trail.
The city maintains that. Yep, that's under our municipal maintenance agreement.
All right. Thank you very much.
We are anticipating 60% plans by mid-September, so that project is moving forward with design and preparing for construction. The County-Stated Highway 15. The County State Highway 15 bridge we've discussed, construction will begin once the box cover is made and delivered. 2023 overlays, all roads are complete except for Cassaw 12. The contractor has delayed paving that because they're going to be hauling on that for airport project. And they didn't want to beat up that brand new lift of a tumbler, so I do appreciate that conscientiousness. Cassaw 10 and 72 in the city of Vernon Center, the bids were opened for the project with an engineer's estimate of $8.4 million for the entire project. The low bid came in at $7.88 million by Holtmeier Construction. So it sounds like it's, it's a good news for the city, especially on how it broke out and, and they obviously received financial assistance from the legislature and USDA. SDAH is still verifying and tabulating the bids. They're anticipating that the city will consider it for award on August 8. So the county will have nearly a $2 million share of that for reconstruction of three blocks of Cassaw 72, of which two blocks are downtown Main Street, past like the lumberyard and the bank, and then Cassaw 10 all the way through, down through Vernon Center. So that's a project we've been, I think we originally thought we were going to build that in 2020. It's been delayed dramatically and costs have gone up due to funding challenges for the city for their, their share of the Cassaw items as well as all the roadways within the city. This is a very major project for the city of Vernon Center and then all their utilities. A few maintenance activity updates. Crews are completing highway shoulder mowing. Will begin fully mowing out the middle third of the county at the end of this month. Crews are working on shouldering in advance of seal coating county roads, as the map I had provided in a previous board meeting earlier this year. Seal coating will likely begin in a few weeks, weather permitting. A large centerline culvert will be replaced on County Road 155 in the coming weeks, which will require multiple day closure. The first round of traffic paint striping has been completed. The contractor will return once the seal coating is completed to catch those roads. We're also beginning to haul gravel per, under our gravel hauling contract, we'll be resurfacing about 100 miles of gravel roads throughout the county this year, as, as is our routine maintenance activity. And the Bray Park Beach Bath House area project is near completion and should be reopened in the coming weeks, as well as the Bray Park Beach Area Playground Equipment Project, replacement project is underway. They've hauled in fill and have it brought up to the grade and have it ready, but the, the playground contractor will actually come in and construct the playground. So we're just waiting on them to mobilize in. The last item I had in the board packet was a Rapidan dam update. Not a lot going on with Rapidan right now. On May 31st, the FERC issued a dam safety inspection report for Rapidan for the period of June 2nd to September 15th, 2022. I think I've shared anything that was in there that I've previously shared with the board. I was surprised it came out that late. On the FERC licensure surrender, the deadline for comments was June 5th with no comments filed, which FERC said should make this process easier. So I think that's good news. The next step is for the FERC to complete their initial review of the application, determine whether or not they need more information, which should be underway now, and they'll request additional information as, as they deem necessary. Following the application review, they'll determine whether an environmental analysis will be needed or what consultation level is necessary with dam safety staff, which their licensure folks in dam safety are in kind of different silos. So there's going to have to be some collaboration, which I think is going to slow down this process. Unfortunately, we were informed by the FERC after we submitted this, and we had previously been told six to 12 months that they, they're hedging their bet on it probably being closer to that full year for the surrender process. We, yesterday, county staff as well as representatives from bar engineering met with the new FERC dam safety engineer, Scott Uriel, and we did an annual safety inspection at the dam. About a half of the day spent crawling around and investigating the dam. I, based on my initial conversation with him, it didn't sound like there was going to be any new surprises for the county, but we'll wait and I'll share the results of what we get when we get their inspection letter from them. And then in addition to that, Josh and I provided a tour of the dam and the flood damages to staff from AMC on June 29th. It was a nice, hot sweaty day. It's always nice and humid in the dam, so.
Oh, it's nice and warm inside there, isn't it?
Yes, it's not a pleasant, pleasant environment, especially with, I think the county's got to be about a dozen dead beavers in there stinking the Amberson structure up.
Yep.
I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Ryan.
Everybody doing okay, or you want a break, or should we continue on?
I'm okay.
Okay. Run through the minutes, Bob.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, the first item is the county board minutes for June 20th.
I'll move the minutes.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number seven in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a M365 Collaboration Services Administrator. This is a position in our Information Technology Department. Well, we did have a vacancy created with the departure of a staff that kind of plays into this request. The department director had requested an additional staff person in 2024 for our budgeting process for this M365 Collaboration Services Administrator. But with this vacancy, we thought we could revamp the job description, get that position filled, which is a needed position in terms of making sure that we're getting the greatest benefit out of our Microsoft products. And so when this job description was created, we ran it through our consultant to determine the proper grade, and it did come back with a recommendation of a grade eight, whereas the previous position had been a grade seven. And so we're bringing it here for the board's consideration for that increase in the grade of an existing position.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Under informational items, then, we do have a lateral transfer of a child protection specialist to child protection assessment specialist. We did initiate then recruitment to refill the child protection specialist position and did fill that position. We also filled a mapping and property records specialist in the Property Environmental Resources Department. We also had employment or filled a position in our 911 telecommunicator role. Then we had completion of employment of a facilities maintenance technician in our facilities department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, we had the resignation of an assistant county attorney and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those human resources items.
Any questions?
All right, item number eight in your packet then is memo related to All Seasons Arena Improvement Recommendations. This is information that I've previously shared with the board in work sessions, but to kind of recap, the All Seasons Arena Board of Directors or Joint Powers Board has been working with a construction manager to review recommendations on improvements to the All Seasons Arena. This has been, quite frankly, a discussion that's been going on for a number of years in terms of build new versus remodel or address some of the needs in the current building. But on June 9th, the Joint Powers Board did review some funding scenarios and has made a recommendation to the partner organizations to move ahead with renovations at the All Seasons Arena. One of the benefits that has surfaced with this discussion is that for the first time, Independent School District 77 has agreed to participate financially in the renovations of the All Seasons Arena because they utilize that facility for a number of their sports teams. And so they have committed $1.1 million of lease levy revenue for this project. Overall, the project improvements are about $11.5 million. The big driver is the ice infrastructure, so all the refrigeration equipment is reaching the end of its useful life. They basically have to take it down to the pipes and replace those pipes and start over with a newer refrigeration system. Then if you've been in All Seasons Arena, you'll recognize that it is kind of an older style of interior improvements, and so there's a few fire code issues that need to be addressed. And as the various partners were talking about things, we also recognized that for this level of investment, maybe the exterior needed a little attention as well. Not a, a major improvement to the exterior, but trying to kind of make it a little more appealing to the general public and the community. And so in terms of Blue Earth County's share, we have just under 5% share based on, or I'm sorry, 7.7% share based on our population that's included within the District 77 borders that's not part of a community. And so our share after the school district contribution is $815,872. A portion of this funding to address these renovations will be done through bonding, but based on feedback from the board previously, I think we'll pay our cash payment upfront so we avoid that financing cost. And so the request today is to get board support to move ahead with these renovations at the All Seasons Arena. You'll see on the third page in the packet, there is a schedule of when construction would start. I did ask the question, when do we anticipate construction being done? And that's a little harder to pinpoint, but obviously the hope is to have at least one of the ice sheets up and running for fall. But you know, that's going to be the challenge. They'll be working hard to try and get both sheets of ice operational for the hockey season, but it's a short window. Pretty happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions?
I don't have questions, Mr. Chair.
I don't know if they have questions, just, I don't know, a comment. It was, we spent a little time at this with Blue Earth County, Bob, and of course with their partners. And yeah, it is good to have the school district involved again with the contributions. He's, this building is, yeah, it's been around and it's taken a lot of wear, but it, there's a lot of parts that are still good. And of course, some of the more expensive things I think we have to replace, so it's good.
Did I hear somewhere along the lines of the refrigeration and the ice making equipment could be in the 80s? Is it that old or was it replaced at one point?
Um, I don't know if it's, I think some of the piping is.
Piping.
Okay.
Piping.
It's original.
Yeah, the refrigerant is getting to the end of a 20, 25-year life cycles, I understand.
I just heard, I remember hearing something.
Yeah, there are some pipes that are kind of original, and they did have a leak not too long ago that they had kind of scrambled during the hockey season to get fixed. It's, it's tired. Tired building.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Got a motion, you got a second, any discussion? I think this is a, an item that's well-needed in Blue Earth County, the city of Mankato. Being able to pay cash on this is going to save the county a lot of money, not having to bond it. And I think it's one of those, those items that we definitely need to, to work with the city of Mankato, North Mankato, and the school district down. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number nine in your packet is an application for an exempt gambling permit by the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association. They plan to hold an event in October, and so this application has been reviewed and bringing it forward here today for approval.
So moved, second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Item number 10 in your packet is a memo regarding a request from Javon's Family Vineyard and Winery LLC. They've now submitted the required paperwork to apply for an on-sale liquor license. This license would allow them to sell beer in accordance to the Blue Earth County Farm Winery coordinates. The county attorney and sheriff have reviewed the license application, and so we're recommending approval here today.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Item number 11 in your packet is the County Attorney's Office Monthly Report. County Attorney McDermott was unable to be here today and so asked just to include this report. We certainly can take down any questions the board might have, or I don't know if Megan is prepared to provide any feedback, but we obviously didn't talk ahead of time, so I'm assuming not.
It's a good, it's a good report. I appreciate getting it.
Yeah, it's a nice, I think County Attorney always puts, puts together a good report for us, and we appreciate that. This need, it doesn't need to be approved though, right?
It doesn't.
No, okay.
It's an informational item, so that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So then we will go to our Commissioner Reports on Committees, and we'll start with Mark.
No. Probably realized I don't have too many. Everything's good. June 27th, we did a work session. July 5th, we had a department meeting, and then we got another committee board meeting today. I was out for a little bit, so, but I'm back.
All right.
Good to have you back. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a relatively late schedule also. I was out of town last week. But after our last board meeting, I was over in Niga Lake and met with Ryan and the mayor and the administrator over there and talked about the intersections in Niga Lake on Highway 14, and some representatives from the state with the activity going on out there, mostly on County Road 17 out by the church out there and the deaths and the accidents. Lot of discussion about what to do with that intersection. I had a good conversation with them. We had a work session. After that, we had the employee recognition, which I appreciate the staff putting all that together. Jesse, Stephanie, Aaron, and I thought that was well-received. And then I had a couple legislative meetings with my SECV statewide emergency communication board, and then several calls pertaining to the gravel pits that we're working on right now at this point. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Patty.
Okay, after our last board meeting, I had a NICO committee meeting for FICA and then on the 21st, Region 9. On June 22nd, I had SHAC in the township meeting. The 27th, the work session and employee recognition. The 5th, department head meeting, and yesterday I had FICA again to go over the resolutions for the meeting in a couple weeks.
All right, come. Since the June 20th board meeting, Township Officers has been mentioned. On the 23rd, I had La Sura. On the 23rd, I had La Sura, one watershed, one plan policy committee. On the 26th, AMC Drainage Work Group meeting, as well as a NACO ag policy meeting. The 27th work session and employee recognition have been mentioned. 28th, met with both the sheriff and the county attorney's department as far as budgets. Department heads on the 5th was mentioned and Soil and Water Conservation District on July 6th. That ends my report. All right. And for my report, I had AMC board meeting on the 22nd. I had a, in the 20, actually, we had a get-together on the 22nd and a board meeting on the 23rd. On the 26th, I had NACO Arts and Culture Zoom meeting. We had our work session on the 27th with the employee recognition event after that in the afternoon. Went over the sheriff's and the county attorney's budget on the 28th. Took a short trip that was even shorter because I troubled with my camper. So I came back early on the 4th of July and had a department head meeting on the 5th. And yesterday morning, I had a TDS ACHF meeting Zoom, and that would be the end of mine. So unless there's anything else, were you good to the county? We're in recess.
We're in recess.
Recession.
Second.
All in favor. Sorry.